Didn't mean to wake everyone up. I'm here to call, to order the Carson City Board of Supervisors is Thursday, September 4th, 2014. It is 8:30 a.m. We are meeting at the Community Center in the Sierra Room at 851 East Williams Street here in Carson City. Alan, would you call, call the roll?
Supervisor Bonkowski, Supervisor McKenna, Supervisor Shirk, Mayor Protem Aboud, Mayor Kroll.
May I just add that Mayor Kroll is being interviewed by CNBC with regards to the Tesla issue, and so he will be here as soon as that interview is complete. May I call on Reverend Ken Haskins for the First Christian Church to lead us in the invocation?
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we just thank you, Lord, for this beautiful day that you've given and blessed us with. And, Father, we thank you for this community and all that makes up a great community, from our families and our schools and churches, from our, the people that watch out for our safety, our sheriff and our fire chief and the countless people that contribute in so many different ways to make a community great. We pray for each and every one. We pray for our civic leaders and for our supervisors here today, Lord, and ask you to continue to guide their, their decisions and help us to do all that we can while we can't do everything. And certainly, we can do what we can every day in our own community to ensure a better quality of life for all. Help us to do our part, and I pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
At this time, we are in number, item number five on the agenda, public comment. The public is invited at this time to comment on and discuss any topic that is relevant to or within the authority of this public body. Is there any public comment?
Morning, Board. Stacy Giomi, Fire Chief. I just wanted to briefly mention that next Thursday is 9/11, and at 9 o'clock at the 9/11 Memorial in Mills Park, we're going to be doing a brief 9/11 ceremony. Yeah, we'll have an invocation, and our joint Sheriff's Fire Honor Guard will be there. It won't be a long ceremony, but we're hopeful, we're hopeful that it will be meaningful, and the public and board members are invited to attend. And I also just wanted to give you a brief update. We've been working with the planning team on the relocation effort of the Steel I-beam to a permanent home. We have preliminary designs. We're working on cost estimates right now. We hope by the November board meeting, we'll have drawings, conceptual drawings, cost estimates, and whatnot to bring to you for your approval in terms of the board designating its final resting place. We think what we've put together is quite impressive, so we're excited to bring it to you. So I just wanted to give you an update on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Stacy. One more time, what time is that ceremony?
So 9 a.m.
9 a.m.
Next Thursday at Mills Park at the I-beam is in Sealy Loop off of Solomon Road. Thank you.
Any other public comment? We'll go back to item number six on the agenda, with approval of the minutes.
I move to approve the minutes of May 15th, 2014, with a correction to item 29 for the approval date. It should say September 2014 and not June 2014.
We have motion and second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Item number seven, adoption of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda?
No changes.
Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda as published? Well, no, we will adopt the agenda as published. Move to item number eight, the courts. Tad and Max, are you going to present this?
Good morning. For the record, Max Cortez, Court Administrator. Happy to be here today. With me is Chief Tad Fletcher from Alternative Sentencing, District Court Judge Jim Wilson, and Justice of the Peace Municipal Court Judge Tom Armstrong. Judge Todd Russell and Judge John Tatchell were unable to attend today but are in full support of the agenda item that's before you and the amendment to the existing contract with the city, Alternative Sentencing and the courts. So just a quick, brief history. The marshals and bailiffs assigned to the judges have been assisting alternative sentencing for about 15 years, and when they assist them, it's in the office, speaking with probationers and individuals who the judges have ordered to report to Alternative Sentencing for monitoring and supervision, as well as out in the field during home visits. And for 15 years, there has been no incidents, nothing that would cause any type of liability or any incidents of any nature. So what occurred, one other item is that all of the officers are all post-certified Category 1 peace officers, so they're all fully trained to work in the courtrooms as well as out in the field. Recently, we formally moved all of the court positions, and when we did that, this item or issue surfaced, that there is judicial immunity that the courts are covered when the officers are working in their capacity as bailiffs and marshals in the courtroom. However, because they are working as alternative sentencing officers out in the field, that extension does not cover if there were any incidents that were to occur. So before you today is the amendment to provide indemnification to the courts so that in the hopefully unlikely event that something did occur, the courts and the judges would be covered. So we're here today to answer any questions.
Thank you, Max. All right, I will open this to the board for questions and discussion. Brad?
Couple of questions for you. First, this is probably a question for you, Nick. Would they be covered under our umbrella liability policy, general liability policy?
They would be. When they're operating with, when the bailiffs and the marshals are operating with alternative sentencing, they would be covered under the city's general liability.
And then, can you give us some examples of incidents that could happen, so we have an idea really of what we're, what we're talking about?
Hello, Tad Fletcher. Good morning, Board of Supervisors. Some of the incidents that could happen could be potential use of force issues or anything like that, any kind of injury really to the officer themselves, or any kind of force used against anybody that we're dealing with. That's pretty much where we're at, so.
The other employees that are working for DAS, do they have the judicial immunity? What I'm trying to do is get, get an idea of what is the difference between the employees that they're helping and the job that they're doing when they step out of the court jurisdiction and into the DAS jurisdiction?
Under NRS 211A, our alternative sentencing officers are covered under that with their authority to go out and conduct their duties. The bailiffs and marshals, their duties are outlined specifically for the court setting, so with this, when they interact with us and assist us in the field, this agreement allows them to do that and function with us. So, that's what we have, so.
John?
So this is caused by the two branches of government, is that correct? So it's just because your, the courts are a different branch of government than the executive, we need this agreement?
Any other board discussion on this issue? I'll open it up to the public for any comment. Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board.
Just a comment, I'd like to thank the judges for showing up here. It's, I know you have a busy schedule, and your free time doesn't happen very often to get ready for the next case, so thank you for coming.
We're happy to be here.
I move to approve amendment number one to the agreement entered into between the courts, the city and DAS.
Have a motion and a second. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to item number nine on the agenda. Ken, are you going to bring this to us?
I will. For the record, Kenny Ferling, the sheriff. This is an item to accept the Bureau of Justice Assistance Grant for FY 214, Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant in the amount of $12,662. Just a short summary, this grant is used for education prevention programs that are run out of the sheriff's office, connecting both community seniors and everyone else in the community. It is primarily funding our programs such as Elementary Dare, Dare Plus classes, Red Ribbon Campaign, our Cops and Kids spaghetti dinner, which is always a great treat down at the Fandango, our open house and national night out.
Thank you, Ken. Board, questions? Seeing none, open it to the public for any questions on this issue. Seeing none, I will bring it back to the board. John?
I move to approve the application, accept the BJA Fiscal Year 2014 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant, award number 2014-dj-bx-0053 in the amount of $12,662.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Moving on to item number 10, fire. Stacy?
Good morning, Board members. Stacy Giomi, Fire Chief. I am here today to present to you a, an inter-local agreement and a memorandum of understanding between the city and the American Red Cross. Carson City maintains a lot of tools in our toolbox for responding to disasters and emergency situations, and we've not in the past had a clearly defined agreement with the Red Cross. We've had training with them, we've cooperated with them on training and with shelter operations, but what this does is formalizes our agreement with the Northern Nevada Chapter of the American Red Cross to provide for shelter services and other disaster response assistance. Between us and them, we're excited to sign it. We have our community emergency response team that are trained to initially open a shelter, they've received Red Cross training, and the integration there would be seamless, and that's what we're hoping to do, is to push that forward. I'd like to have Clara Andriola from the Northern Nevada Chapter of the American Red Cross come up briefly and say a couple words if you could.
Thank you. Thanks. You bet. Thank you. We're honored, obviously, to enter into a formalized agreement. We've always had a very great working relationship. The Northern Nevada Chapter covers about 87,000 square miles, just a small amount of territory. In terms of formalizing this, will help us to ensure that it is seamless, and so I'd really like to thank the chief and Stacy Belt as well, and all of the volunteers in the community to which we serve, this opportunity to provide, hopefully not have to provide, to be honest with you, but I think certainly we saw last winter with the Emergency Warming Center and our cooperation in terms of saving lives. So we certainly appreciate the approval and thank everyone for their cooperation. Thank you.
So, that's it. I'm ready to answer any questions if you have any.
I'll bring this to the board. One question I do have, Stacy, is which facilities besides the schools and the community center are shelters in case of disaster?
So we have, we have agreements, the city has agreements with the Carson City School District to use any of the schools for a shelter, and with the Community College to use that facility as a shelter as well. That was previously approved by the board. In this specifically, our agreement is with the Red Cross to operate city-owned facilities. One is this building, and the other one is Fuji Park. So those are the two that we have identified that are city-owned facilities that will work for shelters.
So do they have agreements with the school district, or is it just the city?
Well, we, we have an agreement with the school district. We can access that through this agreement. Then they can go and develop those agreements with the school districts directly. We would use our shelter, our facilities first in a disaster, just because they're under our control and we don't have to go through another organization to get permission to use them.
Okay. What about stockpiling goods or materials needed, that sort of thing? Are we going to give them permanent space for storage, or?
They actually have been storing materials here in Carson City for a number of years. So there are, there's equipment that they own in a trailer that's mobile purposely for that reason, and then the city owns two disaster shelters as well. So between those three, we're able to open up 150-bed shelter. Between our CERT volunteers backed up by the Red Cross, we can get a shelter open in about a, between 60 and 75 minutes. So we have those things in place, and they're being stored in our facilities currently.
I don't have any questions or issues with the MOU, just a request on future agreements. We don't have to deal with it on this one, but on a technicality, I would prefer that we don't approve these retroactively, that we make the effective date of these agreements to date that they're approved.
Sure, and I should have done that, so, thank you.
Stacy, I'm, I'm not familiar with Red Cross. Do they have an office here, or a field office, or where are they located?
They do not. They, they're located in Reno. As Claire said, their chapter based out of Reno serves the basically entire northern two-thirds of the state, so the greater portion of Nevada, it's one of the largest in area chapters that Red Cross has in the United States, but I'll have Clara answer.
I'm feeling like I'm putting you on the spot in terms of some of the operational things. We actually have a Reno office, we have an office in Incline, we have an office in Elko, and an office in Winnebago. So we're strategically positioned and within all of those areas, including here. We have staged trailers, and, and in the event something does happen in any of those particular areas, and even pulling resources, and hopefully we'll never see something that big, but we have that ability to do that. We actually have volunteers that are based here as well, and we work in conjunction with CERT and many other nonprofit organizations that are looking for even being prepared. It's not just response, but the prepared part as well. So we're working with, you know, the fire chief and his team, even with a rollout for a national preparedness event that's happening with the Red Cross across the nation. So I hope that answers your question in terms of where we're located and how we're positioned. We have over 200 volunteers throughout those 87,000 square miles, so.
Yes, it did. Thank you very much.
Further board comment? Public comment on this issue? Seeing none, I will bring this back to the board.
I move to approve a memorandum of understanding between the American Red Cross, Northern Nevada Chapter, and Carson City for the purposes of developing a working relationship to prepare for and respond to disasters, and to authorize the signing of a document allowing for the use of city facilities as emergency shelters.
I have a motion and a second. Discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? The motion passes. Moving on to item number 11, Health and Human Services. Nikki, are you going to take us through this?
I am.
Thank you.
So Nikki Aker, Director, Carson City Health and Human Services. And so this is the first reading of a ordinance amendment to the Carson City Municipal Code, Title VII, Animals, Chapter 7.13. And just for the record and to clear up some confusion, NRS 574 defines "a society for the prevention of cruelty to animals" as "any three or more citizens of the state of Nevada who incorporate as a body corporate under the general laws for corporations in this state for the purpose of preventing cruelty to animals." So this is not to be confused with "the society for the prevention of cruelty to animals" or the SPCA. And so this ordinance amendment is looking at "a society," again, not referencing the SPCA. So this ordinance change, it adds language to the following definitions, animal services, animal services manager, animal services officer, to allow for contracting of services. And it also adds the definition of society. And then, under Carson City Animal Services and Powers Number 5, that's amended to allow the city to contract the services to a society. And then the fee schedule was removed and reserved since the contracting agency has a different fee schedule. And up to this time, I have received no comments concerning the ordinance change.
Thank you, Nikki. Board comment?
You know, I look at our history, and unfortunately, Carson City has not done the best job with our animal services facility, and the Humane Society in Reno is actually nationally recognized for their program, so I actually see this as a really good step forward for us. I think that we can solve a lot of problems here.
I agree.
Morning, Nikki. When you mentioned the fee schedule, can you elaborate on that a little bit? What did you mean when you said your statement there?
So we've, out of the ordinance, we've removed the fee schedule because the contracting agency, Nevada Humane Society, will have their own fee schedule, which in many cases is at or below the fees that we're charging. So they need to be able to have their fee schedule.
So the fee schedules could increase. They could, or they, well, we don't know at this juncture. Do you have any idea?
I have an idea that they will be at or below.
Yeah, if, if I could point one thing out, on the board meeting on the 18th, we'll be bringing forward the contract between the Nevada Humane Society and Carson City. It will contain their fees. I've spoken at length with their CEO. Those fees, I don't expect to see any of them above where we, where any of our current fees are, and in fact, most of them are going to be significantly less. As part of their program is to encourage things like adoption, maintaining pets with the owner, and they, and their general philosophy on fees feeds into their overall program. So I don't expect to, I don't expect to have any fees that are above where we currently have them.
And they want to have the ability to, they offer different programs, different specials, and they want to have that ability to do that.
If we approve the contract, and then they came to us with increase in fees, we're kind of stuck with that increase, are we not? If we approve this today?
No, this is just the, the first reading of the ordinance change. On the 18th, I'll be coming forward with the lease, the agreement, and then if that's approved, then we will go for the second reading of the ordinance change. This is just the ordinance change, the first reading.
Okay, so then, any questions I had about financing? Should I wait for the second reading or this one? Wait?
It's not the contract.
Neither. I believe when we bring the contract on the 18th, that would be the time to address those particular questions.
Okay, because I had emailed the other, Nick, some questions, but I'll, I'll wait on those until the 18th then, so I'm glad I clarified that.
That would be best.
So this is just the ordinance change itself?
Correct.
If I'm correct, okay.
Correct.
Thank you.
My question is probably I'll wait till the 18th also. It has to do with regional versus local type of operation, how we account for the money, how it stays in Carson City versus are we funding a program in Incline Village, that sort of thing? It's just all the nuts and bolts, but as far as the ordinance goes, this first reading has no effect on anything. It's the second reading that really matters.
I, I think that's correct, Supervisor McKenna. What, what this does is sets up the contract that is going to come before you, as I've said, on the 18th, just due to the mechanics of the timing of a first and a second reading. That's why Nikki is here this morning, in order for us to remove that particular fee schedule from the current ordinance, to allow then, on the 18th, not only a second reading of the ordinance, but for the board to consider the entire contract with the Humane Society.
And this also allows us to contract with a, another, a society outside of the city. So that's what some of this language is for.
On that, when you set the agenda, I guess I don't know how to do it. Do we have the second reading before we do the contract? Do we do the contract before the second reading?
We're going to do the contract first.
Okay.
And then the second reading.
Yeah, I just don't want to get in a position where we don't have an ordinance in place.
Any other further board questions or discussion? I'll open this up to the public for comment.
Hi, I'm Lisa Schute, and Carson City resident and founder of Carson Animal Services Initiative. I have to say, we're really encouraged by this move. We appreciate that Carson City is now embracing, honestly embracing, the welfare of animals and the people who love them. I've toured the Humane Society, or the Nevada Humane Society. They have a wonderful tour, the second Thursday of each month, and they have such thoughtful ways of not only getting animals adopted, you know, the older cats, the older dogs, they offer assistance. They also have wonderful ways of reuniting pets with families, and no longer are animals used as materials of impound. It's not like a car. It is an animal that is loved, and not only are, or they're also not using animals as a way to get a lot of money when that's really not what a true shelter is about. It's about the safety and protection of animals running at large, and an assistance for people who need help if their dog gets out, or if there's a feral cat problem, or if there are other issues. So we just are so grateful that the city is open to a, a good solution and a way to truly meet the needs of our homeless pets. So thank you.
Lisa, first off, thank you, organization, for raising funds and bringing the matter of animals to the attention of Carson City. Probably for the 18th, I assume the contract will allow you to also continue to raise money and be involved in animals, and I think we, we need to make sure that local groups like yours can support the SPCA. I'm sure they can, I'm just bringing it up. The other thing is, is that you're still raising funds. You have some type of 10K, is it?
We are absolutely raising funds, and thanks for bringing that up. Cassie isn't going anywhere. And what's super exciting is, once this shelter, it's being built, we will change our bylaws to act in a supportive role. So we'll continue to raise money to help with spay-neuter, to help with education. You know, we want kids to really learn about proper animal care, and how animals are forever, and why spay and neuter is so incredibly important. And we will continue with our ongoing fundraisers, and yes, September 20th, we have our 5K9 at Riverview Park, 9 a.m., and then September 27th, we have our pooch plunge at the Aquatic Center. So we have wine tasting next March, and there'll be several fundraisers in between. We continue to write grants. We had a wonderful showing at the State Fair, and we have been at the farmer's market. We are at adoption events, truly out there all the time, 100% volunteer. Everything that we do goes to helping our animals in this community.
Thank you, Lisa. I appreciate your energy and your dedication. Any other board comment? Any further public comment? I'll bring it back to the board.
Bill number is 111.
I have a comment, please. Good morning, Mayor Protem, board members. Lisa Helgert for the record. I do have a, some few questions regarding the language contained in the ordinance. That is what we're talking about today, correct? It's just the language in the ordinance? It's just the language in the ordinance? Regarding that, I have, I would like some of your terminology explained, perhaps a little better in the second reading. Regarding the Humane Society's ability for licensing as a verb, to grant authoris, authoritative permission or license to, that seems pretty self-explanatory, to regulate...
Lisa, what item are you reading, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. Let me pull up, we're in 713 of the... I'm sorry for the delay. I thought I had everything in order here. I'm dealing with your specific underlined items and the changes of the amendment of the language on the agenda, supporting documents. We're on item five of 7.13.01, definitions. So we started with licensing, that we're going to give the Humane Society licensing responsibilities. Then we have regulating.
Number five?
Yeah, number five. Animal services means the facility authorized by direction or contract by the Carson City Board of Supervisors for licensing, comma, regulating, comma, policing, comma, enforcing. Those are the words that are underlined, and those are what I've chosen to ask the questions about today, about what we mean by those, by those words, as opposed to what dictionary.com is saying they are. So we started with licensing. Next in line is regulating. Regulating as a verb, to control or direct by rule, principle, method. I'm assuming that that's what we're going to use, that would make the most sense. There's, of course, four different meanings to regulate. What concerns me is the word policing in the, in the, in the amendment to the language. How are we using the word policing? Are we using it in a military form, which is covered, which would be the cleaning and keeping of a camp, post, station, facility, which is what an animal shelter is? Or are we using it as the verb, as in to regulate, control, or keep in order, as if by means of police? And that is very similar to enforcing, which is next. And enforcing as the verb, to put or keep in force, compel obedience, to obtain by force, to impose upon a person, to support, demand, claim by force, to impress or urge forcibly. So I, I really, I, I really suggest that we go back and look at the, look at those specific words regarding our new partnership with the Humane Society as far as policing or enforcing. I think it really steps on the toes of the general police in this town that tend to go with an animal services sworn enforcement person. And I think that there's potential for the Humane Society to find themselves in a situation they haven't already been experienced in. In Reno, they do not enforce or police.
Lisa, do you have a suggested change?
I think that we should omit policing and stick with enforcement because our...
What about exchanging the word policing for supervising?
I would be agreeable to that 100%. Because also, contained in here, and I won't, you know, muddle through the paperwork because we're dealing with just the language issues. Enforcing is different than policing, and they do have enforcement capabilities, they should have enforcement capabilities. But the Reno Humane Society doesn't do that right now. They have Washoe County Animal Services as the enforcement agency, and they're just the collection agency for the dogs that they deem adoptable. We're adding to the responsibilities of the Humane Society simply by making them, by having them take over and partner with the current animal services facility. So they're getting into an arena that they haven't been exposed to in Reno. So there's going to be that learning curve with a lot of different issues, including taking in all animals and not just cherry picked ones that they can deem adoptable or suitable for their facility. So they're now going to be responsible for every animal in Carson City, be it deemed vicious, not viable for long-term life, which brings in, they're a no-kill facility, but they're going to have to be a kill facility now for Carson City if, because there is, they take everything we have. They're our only agency. So they're not going to be able to tell Washoe County Animal Services, because we're not going to have that anymore, we're not going to take that dog, that dog, or that dog. So I believe that the language contained in our new amendment for our new policy and partnering with them needs to be reexamined for what they can provide under their policies as their nonprofit mission. If that's understood, if I need to rearrange the words so that we all understand what I'm...
Thank you, Lisa. I would ask Nick to respond if you would.
Yeah, if I could, if I could ask Kevin Ryan from the Nevada Humane Society to come up. There's reason why we have the specific language in there. There's, it all, a lot of it fits into the program and the lessons learned from the relationship that they currently have in Washoe County. So Kevin, if, if you could please address those.
So I think there are a number of excellent points raised.
Can we get your name for the record, please?
Sure, I'm sorry, it's Kevin Ryan. I'm the CEO of Nevada Humane Society, for the record. I think there are a number of things. I think some of the terminology does get in our way here. Just to be, to clarify our relationship with Washoe County, we are by contract obligated to take all owners or renters from Washoe County, regardless of adoptability, regardless of deemed status, regardless of history. So if someone comes in, even if it's deemed a dangerous dog and wants to surrender it at, at Nevada Humane Society, we are contractually obligated to do so. So we do take, we do deal with dangerous dogs, as well as, I think it's important to clarify the definition of no-kill. No-kill is a troublesome term, but what it fundamentally means is that we never euthanize animals due to space or convenience or lack of resources, which means we don't say we're out of space, so we're going to euthanize animals, or this animal has a broken leg, so we're going to euthanize the animal. When animals are unadoptable, we do euthanize them. And when, when we talk about our, our save rate, our live release rate being at 93%, that actually counts the animals that are euthanized at animal services. And we evaluate every one of those animals that are over at, at Washoe County. It's certainly a different model, but fundamentally, the, the actual process will be exactly the same. And we, and we do have some experience doing that. The citizen is correct that we don't currently go out and bring animals in, which would be a different relationship. But other than that, it will be fundamentally very similar. And we don't have the ability to cherry pick animals. You know, the only option we have is we can either transfer them, which we transfer any animal from Washoe County that another rescue group doesn't want, or that we deem as safe to put into our community, which would be the exact same model that we would use here in Carson City. Because, you know, certainly no-kill is our mission statement, but our, you know, we consider our two covenants with the community is to save all the animals that are savable and to keep our community safe. We're never going to put animals as best we can, as best to our knowledge, into the community that are not safe. So I think sometimes no-kill gets confusing, and it certainly does, but does that answer your questions and any questions from the Board of Supervisors?
So Kevin, are you comfortable with the language as is presented in the ordinance that's before us today?
I don't necessarily have a problem with it, no. I mean, I, I, I certainly understand the citizen, I'm sorry, Lisa?
Lisa.
Sorry, at Lisa's perspective, that, that, you know, policing is, is, can be interpreted different ways, but I think from a fund, if you looked at animal ordinances from across the country, and including places with partnerships like this, like Omaha, Lincoln, places like that, they, they're similar, they're similar language. But again, I don't have a problem with the, the language Supervisor Mckowski presented either, so.
The, the discussion is good, but I think it's premature. I think this is a contract discussion.
Sure.
This is an ordinance. This is the powers that Carson City has, not the powers that SPCA has. And I would hate to modify the powers that Carson City has so that we can't police and we can't regulate, that sort of thing. We don't have to give those powers to SPCA. But as far as I understand the way law works, we create this ordinance, this is what Carson City can do. We don't have to give all of these powers to SPCA.
Well, I, I don't think we're giving the powers to the Nevada Humane Society. You're delegating your authority as a duly elected board to the Humane Society to perform those specific functions. And I, I want to also point out that before we start changing words, if that's the intent of the board this morning, we would need to go through and make sure that any change is in accordance with the NRS. So the, the board still maintains its oversight and control of the Nevada Humane Society in the same way that the board would maintain its authority and control over the current arrangement with a city provided. So you're never giving your powers away. You're delegating authority to the Nevada Humane Society to perform those discrete functions that are contained within the ordinance, and you maintain your oversight. And we do have the ability, when we get to the contract, to terminate it for various reasons.
But we delegate our authority by contract. We don't delegate them by ordinance. That's my point, and so I'm with you. Changing the wording of this ordinance probably is not prudent. Changing or making sure that the powers we give to the people we hire to do this function is what we really want. But we don't have to give all of the powers to that organization we contract with. But that's all contractual. So we're wordsmithing here, or we're discussing, I don't know, government, basically, government setup. I would not want to change the wording without having legal tell us that it's, we're not making a big mistake. I don't have a problem with delaying this first reading until next meeting, but then that's going to delay the whole contract back into another two weeks away and sometime in October. So...
Joe Ward from the DA's office. The ordinance, I, I believe stems from a Reno ordinance. When Reno contracted with Nevada Humane Society, and a lot of the language was borrowed from what has been tried and true in Reno. Policing versus service supervising. I don't know if, if the semantics or wordsmithing or unnecessary obstacle is something that, that at this point, not dealing with contracting, as the city manager pointed out, the contract, of course, has provisions in there that give the city the comfort level it needs with respect to terminating the contract. I, I would prefer, and I defer, of course, to Randy Munne, who drafted this, who borrowed from the city of Reno, who used to work with the city of Reno, and not change policing or any word in the ordinance at this juncture.
Thank you, Joe. Lisa, did you have further comment?
Well, yes. And not to harp on, on this, but policing gets into a lot of different, per, per NRS 57404, there's a whole page, which I'll spare everybody from trying to read, but they need to be sworn in the same manner as other peace officers. They need to have their own badge. That involves the sheriff department. They need to be fingerprinted. The Board of Trustees from the Humane, from the Humane Society will need to request that in writing. So I still think that we're getting into an area by using the word policing in this, in this amendment to the ordinance. I agree with John, pardon me Supervisor McKenna, that if this is the next issue as far as doing the contract and the language in the contract, I'll defer, we'll come back on the 18th. But this reading, I believe, was here to discuss the, the wording contained in the ordinance, and we're trying to move forward here. Time is money, so to speak. We would like to get an organization in there. We would like to move ahead and move forward for positive changes and get what we need done. But I think that there's really a problem with the words policing and enforcement when you're dealing with a nonprofit charitable organization. That's mission is to take care of animals and our animal issues. And perhaps we should bring enforcement and regulation, pardon me, policing and regulation back to the city, where I believe that, I believe it should be, I believe a lot of other citizens. And on that note, maybe we should have a public forum to discuss what people are interpreting these amendments to be, and that we can come to a community-wide comfort level, level of ordinance that we can all, you know, hopefully follow, and these issues won't pop up. When I hear policing, God forbid, an agent of the Humane Society go to a home, there's, there's hostility, there's, there's passion involved, there's conflict. Even the sheriff's department goes to disputes in pairs. I just, I don't think it's the Humane Society's responsibility to put themselves in literal life-threatening situations possibly, or physical jeopardy, in that capacity of, you know, running an animal shelter and taking care of our animal needs. And I think that it just needs to be further defined and separated, just on those issues. Okay? So I look forward to the next meeting, and hopefully, we can really refine this down so we get it right the first time and don't continually have to come back. That didn't work out. I know we're going to have kinks in the system that we're all going to need to fix, but I would just really like to see everybody protected, as well as the Humane Society as a nonprofit, and the city contracting with them, that nobody gets put in a bad situation that costs a life, extra money, and an embarrassment. And so, thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment?
Just one mine, I guess, Nikki.
I'll bring this back to the board.
Brad? I do have a question. I think that Ms. Helgert brings up some interesting points. Have we had any discussions on what the relationship is going to be between the Humane Society and the sheriff's department, and when they will go out on calls? Can we put that on the record?
Raina, do you want to discuss that issue?
Yes, I can certainly, and I'll have Nikki chime in too, because she, and Kevin Ryan. But we've had, yes, we've had discussions. We've had discussions, and part of NRS is that the judges need to be involved. We've had a discussion with the courts, how they want that process, because they do have to be sworn in as officers. We've had the discussion with Sheriff Furlong on how we're going to deal with the radios, and how they communicate with dispatch, how they communicate when they need an officer to show up when they are maybe jammed up. It doesn't happen very often, it happens once in a while. And so, yes, and we have, in fact, another meeting next week regarding the radio, so we have that whole communication, how the officers on the road will be responding to dispatch, how the officers know that they're, that they need to, to jump and help when, and the sheriff's deputies, when they're in trouble. So yes, we have covered that. Do you want to add to it, Nikki?
Yeah, like Raina said, we do have a meeting set up next week, and it includes the sheriff, Public Works, who is over the radios. Kevin is invited to that meeting also, so.
And that meeting's the final detail. Yeah, we've already talked, this is the final detail. So they're already aware.
This is working out all the entire process and trying to work out some of the bugs.
So would the sheriff's department fall under the definition of facility under number five for animal services currently?
So, yeah, we're not sure we understand your question.
Same number five, well, the definition is, animal services means the facility authorized by direction or contract by the Carson City Board of Supervisors for licensing, regulating, policing, enforcing, receiving, et cetera.
No.
Are...
No.
So they are not considered part of animal services? So they are not considered part of animal services?
No.
Okay. And so that would continue even if the Humane Society's in charge rather than Carson City?
Absolutely correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Nick, one question I would have is, would we reference policing as it pertains to animal services? I mean, I guess, just making it that much more clear that animal services is the policing agent on this.
I would defer back to the DA's previous comment. Randy Munn did draft this, and that's why I said before we start wordsmithing things, we would need to check to make sure that it was, in fact, in accordance with the NRS.
And Joe Ward from the DA's office. I think policing and enforcing has to be read completely in the context of animal control and within the scope and course of animal control. And with respect to having officers sworn by the courts to fulfill their roles as such, I agree that the wordsmithing, at this point, given the big picture, might not be productive.
Thank you, Joe, for that clarification. John?
Going back to the actual wording and purpose of today's subject. To further provide for the contract authority of the Board of Supervisors to contract out animal services for a society of prevention of cruelty to animals incorporated for the following purposes. This document is to allow the board to enter into contracts for these purposes. It doesn't say we have to have, enter into contracts for supervision or regulation or enforcement. That's all contractual. What we're doing here is we're taking, we're giving ourselves the authority to enter into a contract with this organization. It's been my training and understanding that we don't limit the powers of the city when we do ordinances. We could find ourselves by doing, removing words, changing words, putting our definition of words in here. We could remove our ability to have that power and have to go back and restate the ordinance if there's a problem and we cut out a power that the city has and we gave it away, or we removed its ability. This is an ordinance that allows the city to enter into a contract. What that contract entails needs to be discussed. Lisa brought up some good points that on the 18th will be discussed. As far as her suggestion to have a, put this out to the people of Carson City who are interested in what it says, I don't see it as a problem, except for timing. And also, the other thing is, I don't think we have a final contract yet. I really don't know that we know exactly what we want from animal services and probably won't until the 18th. So we could either push this off and delay the process for a couple of weeks, or we can approve it and then make sure we give away only, not give away, we contract for only the powers that we really want the SPCA to have.
There were great points brought up. When this comes back on the 18th, I just want to clarify, just as Supervisor McKenna just did, we can change any wording at that time that we so desire or we find may influence a contract. So when this comes back for the ordinance reading again, or with the contract, we can change the verbiage of this? Is that...
Of your gentleman's?
Or just in the con, let me backtrack then. When we come forward with the contract, the contract will be tied to the ordinance, correct?
The contract, I believe, would be a standalone document. And this ordinance, as Supervisor McKenna points out, is kind of the empowering tool that facilitates the city entering into such a contract.
Okay, so when it comes back for the second reading, changing the verbiage at the second reading on the ordinance would not be advisable because it would throw it back to, we'd have to have a first reading, correct?
That's correct. You would delay the process on the ordinance and would likely, by changing the language, require a first reading.
But during contract negotiations, we could, in that contract, put in any verbiage in the contract which supersedes the ordinance?
This, the ordinance is, I'm sure, something that is a great tool for guidance with purposes of not going beyond what is empowering, where the city is empowered to go. But the contract, you've got, given the language in the ordinance, you've got greater, I think, discretion and ability to work or negotiate a contract if you don't restrict yourself at the ordinance level.
My basic question is, when it comes to contract, we can have a contract written and agreed upon that supersedes the ordinance? Yes or no?
I'd say no. You don't want to put language in a contract that is in contravention or in derogation of a code.
Could I just try this? I think Jim's question is, can we have a contract that does not authorize all of the powers that the city has to the contractee?
Absolutely.
And my answer is, we can do anything we want with that contract, as long as we don't give them powers that we don't have.
That's correct. Thank you.
Thank you. That's what I was leading to, too. So, thank you.
Yeah, I'm going to speak for Ms. Helgert, and she can correct me if I'm interpreting her incorrectly, but I think her objection is that these are not powers that are currently in the ordinance. These are powers that are being proposed to be added to the ordinance, which is why they're underlined and being added. So what I would suggest is that Randy Munn be prepared, when this comes back for the second ordinance, I would recommend that anybody in the public that wants to have public comment on this issue, show up for that second reading. And if it so happens that because of the public comment, or because of arguments made by Randy at the second reading, things change, then that will become the first reading and we'll just have to delay it. But that gives everybody an opportunity to give input, and then we can resolve it all at that time.
We're going to pull the current ordinance. Hopefully, we can get it here momentarily. My assumption would be that language is in the current ordinance, because that is, in fact, what empowers animal services to perform those functions. I mean, they're, do you have it?
Not yet.
Well, if it was in the current ordinance, then it shouldn't be underlined in, as a proposed change to this ordinance.
Still board discussion time. John?
Well, if we don't have, as a body, as Carson City, if we don't have the power to direct, supervise, regulate, police, or enforce animal services, then what are we doing? Okay? We have the power. There's no way around that. What we're doing here, and I take you back to what we're reading here, to provide for the contract authority of the Board of Supervisors to contract out animal services with a society for the prevention of cruelty to animals. That's what we're doing, is we're providing the city with contract authority. Now, we can have that to be very specific and limited. We can have it to be very broad and general. But that's a contract. That's not an ordinance.
I just wanted to bring to the citizen's attention, you don't have to attend the board meeting to have a voice. You can email us and have a voice, and we can read your questions at that time. It's very difficult for the average citizen to attend a board meeting during a workday. So I encourage you to email all the board members your questions and concerns, and we can bring them up at the meeting for you, should you not be able to attend.
Additional public comment?
Lisa Helgert, again. Yes, Supervisor Bonkowski did touch on my concerns about that. Thank you, Supervisor Shirk, about mentioning the emails and all that. But we all know, people tend not to do that. I still believe that we should have a forum. Sometimes things on a piece of paper don't communicate exactly what they're trying to say. They could have an opportunity at a forum for a question and answer, period, to fully get out of them what the concern really is, as far as the verbiage contained in, in the, in 71302. NRS 574.04 talks about the swearing in of the personnel, how they need to do it, what their responsibilities are. But then if you go over to NRS 57435, enforcement by society for prevention of cruelty to animals is prohibited. No members, agent or officer, of a society for the prevention of cruelty to animals may enforce the provisions. So for an average citizen like me that doesn't have, that is not a lawyer, we're walking a slippery slope as far as what is meant by the changes in the words of the ordinance versus what's going to get put in the contract. And if we can agree on these word changes before another reading, before the contract, I don't think it would delay things as long as getting it out after a forum and really getting down to the nuts and bolts of the correct wording that should be used and what those words imply. And alls I know is, when I see the word police, if it's policing as a verb, or to have police something, I think of police as in the sheriff's department. And I don't believe that the Humane Society should be involved in the policing, literally, of anything, as much as the duties of our current animal shelter have been enforcement issues and regulation issues. And if it does involve policing, literally policing something, we have involved the sheriff's department. So I just don't want the Humane Society to get more responsibility put upon them than our current animal shelter personnel or services have had to go through.
Thank you. John, did you have another comment?
I'd like to ask staff what your proposed timeline is. Do we push this off today and delay this for a month? Do you have enough time to have a public forum? Do you have enough time to bring the people who know the answers to these questions here? I personally have no problem approving this today and dealing with the questions on the 18th in a manner that makes everybody happy. But we've had suggestions here today. So what's your timeline? What are our options?
To answer the first question first, the timeline would be to conduct the first reading, obviously, today. Then, in chronological order, the contract would come up for consideration by this board on the 18th, followed by a second reading of this current ordinance. And we would look to begin our partnership on or about the 1st of October. So that's the timeline we have. Look, we can live with any decision that the board makes. If you're asking me my personal assessment, I have heard no objections to date that would warrant going through a delay process and a public, any type of public forum. We have already done considerable outreach. I've personally fielded a number of questions. I'm going to continue to do outreach. There really has not been a vocal, or even a, you know, any type of opposition to this proposal here this morning.
Thank you. I'll bring this back to the board for a motion.
I move to introduce, on first reading, Bill Number 111, was it? An ordinance amending the Carson City Municipal Code Title VII, Animals, Chapter 7.13, Licensing and Regulations to amend Section 7.13.010, Definitions to amend Section 7.13.020, Carson City Animal Services/Powers, and to repeal and reserve Section 7.13.040, Collections, Disbursements, Fee Schedule, to further provide for the contract authority of the Board of Supervisors to contract out animal services with a society for the prevention of cruelty to animals incorporated under Nevada Revised Statutes, Chapter 754, for their operation, direction, supervision, regulation, policing, and enforcement of this chapter, and any other powers that the city deems necessary for the administration of this provision as a private, nonprofit entity pursuant to a contract and/or fee schedule approved by the Carson City Board of Supervisors, and other matters properly related thereto.
One clarification, it should be NRS Chapter 574, and then I would second it for discussion.
I'll change my reading to 574.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion on the motion.
Okay, I'll take first.
Okay.
As the motion maker, I'll take first right of discussion. I added a sentence in there, in case that there is a need, when we get down to the contract, we find this is not adequate or that it is too broad. I believe that the contract is the proper document to deal with the matters and the powers that we provide to a contractee, in this case, the SPCA. Organizes are, give the...
Not the SPCA.
Excuse me. Nevada Humane Society. Okay, this says, "with a society for the prevention of cruelty to animals." Okay, Nevada Humane Society. I believe that ordinances should be broad governing statements, contracts should be specific rules of operation and understanding, and rights and responsibilities among parties. I think this is, things brought up today are very valid, but I think their contract matters.
I would agree with Supervisor McKenna, and just point out that if anybody still has an objection, they are going to have an opportunity to bring those objections up for further discussion before we pass the second reading of the ordinance. So nobody's input will be left out of this process.
Well, the sentence you added, Supervisor McKenna, that the city can give any power to them, I'm a little, can you read that sentence again? I mean, you...
I didn't write it. I made it up so I went along, but the purpose...
I know. That's why I'm asking about it.
The purpose is, this has been written, and as alluded to, Mr. Munn is not here. And in my experience, I've found that when you sit down to negotiate a deal, when you write a contract, there's always something that you forgot or needs to be clarified. For example, the word policing in here. We may not give the power to police to the contractee. We may need to give the power to, I don't know, for lack of a better word, to develop local policies. A broad statement is always better. Well, we have a power that's given to us by the Constitution and by the legislature, which is where our power comes from. We should be able to contract out any of those powers, and that's what I'm basically saying here. This gives us contract authority for animal services and keep it broad. We can take that out of there if you want, but we can take it out in the second reading. I...
I just would like to have that sentence read, because it's not in the motion. So can you read it back, or can the secretary read it back, the sentence you added? That's all I ask.
Do you have the ability to read that back, Joe?
I was jotting some notes, and what I came up with was the addition of, "and any other powers the city deems necessary."
That works for me.
Who's the city? I mean, that could be, who deems necessary? It could be anything, any power. I think it's very vague. I don't... I don't, I don't like that verbiage at all. That's got to come out.
It's very general, and it is a power this board has because we are the people that vote. We're the people that are going to vote this contract. We are the people that decide the powers the city has. Yes, it's very general. Or we can take it out and if a problem happens, then we push this off until November.
I don't like the verbiage that you added for that reason. I'm not going to vote in favor of this.
We have a motion and we have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, motion passes. I'm going to call a short recess so the mayor can take over the gavel. We'll be in recess until quarter to 10. Thank you.
You did a great job. I'll just watch, man. It feels good.[658.32]
And we're going to move on to item number 12 under Parks and Recreation, Juan. But I believe the mayor has a disclosure before we get started.
Yeah, thanks. And thanks for bearing with me this morning. And I do have disclosure on this issue. My law firm does work for the Ariz Family Trust and is actually involved in this one. So with that disclosure, I will abstain. And I would ask you graciously impose on you to continue the meeting. And I will have a donut.
You enjoy. All right, Juan, are you going to take us through this?
Yes, I will. Good morning. Madam Chair, I don't know how to refer to you. Good morning, Aunt Karen, members of the board. This is an action to authorize the mayor and staff to sign the documents necessary to complete an escrow towards the purchase of a permanent easement that I will refer to. It's a strip of land consisting of approximately 20 foot in width and about 1,221 feet in length. The strip of land is towards the westernmost edge of the Ariz. Mayor, I'd like you to say that again. Ariz property. And is, the seller has agreed to sell for the appraisal price, which is $35,000, $35,530. The escrow cost will be about $1,000. And in addition to the escrow cost, there will be also the cost of doing a parcel map, segregating what we want to purchase from the main parcel that the Ariz family owns. So for documentation in your staff report, there is a draft contract that with, which I will explain some changes contemplated as of discussions last night about 8:00. There is also a copy of the appraisal and a copy of the title report. Let's take the simplest one is the title report. The title report did not discover any kind of reason that will lead us to believe that if we were to be successfully purchasing this land, we cannot use it for what we want, which is a trail from Highway 50 towards Fifth Street, toward the linear trail. For the purpose of building that trail, the RTC has obtained a grant to be able to facilitate construction of an even larger portion. So this is just a small segment of the entire road that is being contemplated. If there are questions about that, Patrick Pittinger is in the audience and Bear Cron. They complete the team that have worked on this acquisition and this item. The changes to the contract or to the purchase agreement involve the certain clauses. And of course, because of their having so recent, they have not been reviewed by the district attorney's office as of yet. All the documents will be reviewed by the district attorney's office prior to escrow. Anyhow, we would not let the mayor sign absolutely anything unless we review it. Not that the mayor is not capable of doing that on his own, nevertheless. But they are, they refer to the time to close the transaction. The applicants have requested that the time be extended to December 2nd, and that's no problem on staff. As to the, the applicant also has requested that the agreement specifically stipulate that we are responsible for segregating what we want to buy from the whole parcel. That will require a regular survey or a parcel map. It is, it is correct. It is the right thing to do, and staff doesn't have any problem with that change. And we will cover the cost of doing that, too. Finally, the seller has rejected Section 17, which is the section providing for mutual indemnification. And we don't have any problem with that either. We'll confirm more with the district attorney's office. But normally, that clause serves more to help both parties litigate, in case there's litigation, to share the costs and expenditures of that litigation, who will defend who and that kind of thing. So we don't have any problem with that going away either. Are there any questions or any comments? Everybody understands the parcel that, the strip of land that we're purchasing?
I'll open this up to the board. I can't see which lights are on.
Good morning, Juan. Just curious, it's, the open space is contributing $25,530, and regional transportation is $10,000, which equals a 35. But then there's the note of the $1,000 in escrow. Who's paying that?
We will pay that. You know, by the time it gets to that amount is relatively insignificant, and it will come out of the existing budget of, for the purchase of properties of open space, which is just enough to cover this expenditure.
All right, so, open space will be covering $26,530?
Uh-huh, which is, yeah.
For the record. Do we know how much? I think it's the grant that RTC has. How much is that grant?
It's approximately $680,000, $650,000. And Patrick will have the exact figure.
What I was asking is, Patrick, when you come, if you could just also answer, how are you going to be landscaping this? And, you know, just a little brief outline of what's going on there as a finished product, should we decide to buy this?
Certainly. Patrick Pittinger, Transportation Manager, Carson City Public Works. The grant, we now have the official grant award letter from the Nevada Department of Transportation. It's Federal Transportation Alternative Program Funds. It's a $650,000 match, or, excuse me, grant, which requires a 5% local match, which will be provided by RTC. Juan and Open Space graciously agreed to purchase this last piece of property to complete the package we need before implementation. Unfortunately, it was a little more expensive, and they've stepped up to the plate with a little bit more funding, and RTC has been able to find $10,000 to complete the funding there. As far as the actual path goes, this is a continuation, you know, just very briefly, a continuation of the freeway multi-use path from the Boys and Girls Club South. Gets us down to a connection with the linear path east-west that comes just north of Fifth Street. The specifics of the design, it hasn't been designed yet, frankly. We've done, we had a quarter study done with the help of Lumison Associates, and we do only enough work to get it through the grant application process, because nothing is reimbursable until you get the grant. So you only do enough design to make sure it's all reasonable and feasible and have a good cost estimate. But as far as landscaping goes and the really specifics of it, that won't be flushed out until we actually start the project.
Brad?
Juan, do you have the cost of the parcel map? And is that cost also going to be covered by Open Space, or is it RTC?
I think we're going to wrestle for who has the pleasure of covering the cost. Normally, the staff of the Public Works, that's what they do in and out. So most likely, they'll assume most of the, most of the cost. We did assume the cost of covering the survey of what we need done. So that was done already by, and that is Exhibit B on your packet. So we have already the collateral survey of them.
Darren, did you have an official comment, or was that an unofficial comment?
The mayor will, too.
Juan, who's going to own the property? Who's going to administer the property? Who do we call if there's a problem with the property?
Patrick. The property will be owned by Carson City. This is a fee title acquisition. And what happens is that sort of our volunteers will drive the, or will, I'm sorry, will walk the trail. It's a non-motorized trail. And the public at large, any complaints comes to parks or to Public Works, we both go and investigate what the complaint is. If it's something that requires tractors, normally Mr. Schultz will, you know, respond. If it's something that requires people or labor, we'll go and respond and fix it.
Okay, what I'm trying to bring up here is, Open Space is paying for part of it, and RTC basically is paying for part of it. Is it going to be dedicated to city parks? Is it going to be part of the streets? Whose budget is maintenance going to come out of?
This is the mayor route, so it will have one of those signs, you know, identifying it as a, as a route, and it will be part of our trail system under the auspices of Public Works. We help them a lot, though. We don't let them think that it's their trail only.
So maintenance is not going to come out of Open Space money? And maintenance is not going to come out of RTC money? It's going to come out of the city manager's budget?
You know, the answer to that is RTC's money, yes. However, what happens, too, John, is if it's, if it's a matter, if the maintenance item under question necessitates, I don't know, a new bubbler or something like that, we respond and we help. If it's something, again, that requires Public Works expertise, they respond and they help.
Roger, did you want to add to that?
I want to add to that. Roger Mulendorf, Parks and Recreation Director. Juan is our idea guy, not our maintenance guy. So I want to make that statement from the, from the get-go. The north freeway pathway is maintained by the Parks and Recreation Department. So we'll assume the maintenance of that project as well. It's a very small portion of trail. We can fold that into our maintenance budget without a problem.
Thank you, Roger. The other question I have is for Patrick. This $10,000, how is that going to affect street maintenance?
Well, Patrick Pittinger, it's not going to have a direct impact on it. We're still going to implement all the projects that we were intending to implement at this time. It certainly does, you mean that there's $10,000 less for future maintenance activities? But given the fact that this is a necessary component to be able to leverage hundreds of thousands of dollars in, in federal funds, we think it's, it's a wise investment.
Any further board discussion? Seeing none, I open up to public comment. Any public comment on this issue?
Donna Anderson, President of Muscle Powered. Just want to say that this is an important connection to our overall path system and trail system here in Carson City. This has been near and dear to Muscle Powered's heart from the very beginning, because Muscle Powered was formed around the initial freeway multi-use path. I use those paths a lot. In fact, last Wednesday, Ann McQuarrie and I used the linear ditch trail to get to and from a meeting at Public Works for the new bicycle work group, Bicycle and Pedestrian Safety Work Group. So, and I have groups out there walking those paths all the time, and we see people using their bikes and on foot getting to and from work, up at Walmart and the Home Depot, places like that. We see people in electric wheelchairs and on electric mobility devices getting to and from stores. And this is a really important connection, getting these two pieces, getting the linear ditch connected to the freeway multi-use path, which is going to expand access. And I think we'll see a huge expansion on use, too. It's not just used as a recreational path. It's a way of getting around town for a lot of people. And we, Muscle Powered absolutely supports this.
Thank you, Donna.
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Good morning, John.
For the record, my name is John Wagner, and I'm going to be out of order. You can rule me out of order. But I was told today is Juan's last day here working for the city. And he's done, I think, a fantastic job. And I say, Juan, we're going to miss you. So thank you, Juan, for all you've done.
Thank you so much.
And John, you're not out of order. You're right.
All right, thank you.
John, we were going to give Juan tomorrow off.
I'll have the rest of the week.
Any further public comment? Juan, did you want to say something?
I want to say thank you very much for the opportunity to have worked in Carson City. And thank you so much for, I asked, I told Mr. McKenna the other night that I didn't sign the checks that he did. Thank you so much for the trust and the confidence in obtaining all this open space and doing all this great work for our community. I can't wait to start using it. Thank you.
Don't be a stranger.
As long as Mr. Wagner started, I'd like to thank Juan for his hard work and his vision. I think the community had a vision when it passed Question 18 and the Open Space Initiative. It's expensive. It's going to cost this community money in the future, but it's an investment that's well worth the effort and the cost. And I think you did a good job getting these properties and making Open Space what it is at a affordable amount. So we expect you to come back and work for free now.
Thank you, sir. I will.
Any further board comment? Seeing none, I'll bring this back to the board for a motion.
I move to authorize staff and the mayor to execute documents towards the fee title acquisition of approximately $28,424 square feet from the, go ahead, Juan. Go ahead.
Ariz.
Family 1993 Trust located at Lompelane, a portion of APN 10-041-67, for the development of the freeway multi-use pathway inclusive of the changes detailed by Juan Guzman and subject to final review by the district attorney's office.
I have a motion and a second. Discussion on the motion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And I'm now going to turn the gavel back to the mayor.
We're going to now take up item 13A. This is the issue with respect to the acquisition of crack sealant from Maxwell Products. Ms. Belt, you're going to take us through this. Wyatt Soul Source.
Good morning, Mayor Supervisors. Kim Bell, purchasing contracts. Staff is asking you to determine that the PO number 8129 is a purchase of crack sealant from Maxwell Products Incorporated for not to exceed cost of $90,000. This is a product which may only be contracted from a sole source and therefore not suitable for public bidding due to compatibility issues with the crack sealer equipment utilized by Public Works Streets Division. Staff of Public Works is requesting this purchase order for crack sealant because this manufacturer has a patent on the poly-skin packaging. If you have any questions on the specifics, I think Darren can answer those questions.
I think we got a question, so Darren, why don't you come up? Mr. Schultz, come on up. Supervisor Bonkowski.
Good morning, Darren.
Good morning.
Darren Schultz for the record. There's a letter included in our package from Maxwell Products dated July 24th, in which they state, "We will maintain competitive pricing with similar materials." And this goes back to the fact that it's a proprietary product. Have you actually checked to see if it is competitive with similar products?
We have, and we do, yes.
Just for my knowledge, these are the square bricks that they run down the ramp into the thing that melts them, and then they spray it on the road?
Yeah.
Given Mr. Bonkowski's statements, could we adapt our equipment to not use this and buy locally?
We can adapt our equipment, yes. And our equipment will use other types of material. But it likes this material. And what that means is less maintenance, less downtime. If we found, and we've tried this in the last several years, to, to use other type of equip, or product, and we found something that it really likes, and it, it keeps us running, and it's, it's, so that's why we want to move in this direction. But we, we don't have a piece of equipment that will only use this. We can use other products, but this, this one works the best. As far as buying locally, once again, it comes down to, to cost and to price. And, I mean, we certainly consider that.
Jim?
Darren, have you used this product before? Is that correct?
That's correct.
How many times have you used it? Couple of years, or, I mean, is it?
Off and on for the last two years, yes.
Okay, and it's the best product out there, you feel, and you're?
We do, yes.
Is it the least expensive one out of all the products you use?
No, it's not.
How much more is it?
It's somewhere in the middle. There's, there's product that's, that's more expensive per brick, and there's product that's less expensive. Prices kind of vary as you, you know, depending on time of year or when you want to buy it. But it's, it, it holds right there. It's relatively in the middle.
So, and it's longer lasting than the other products, the inferior products?
No, I can't, I can't say that. I mean, as far as, once it gets on the street, I believe they all perform pretty equally. You have to, when you put down crack seal, you have to consider the, the temperatures of your streets. I mean, that, that changes the product that you order. So there's a specification of a type of product we need for our, our conditions here. But it's really about application. And getting the product from a brick into the melting pot down to the street is, is what we're most concerned with, because we're, we're trying to keep things moving. We do, you know, do a lot of crack sealing every year. So this product works the best for the, for the application that we're trying to do.
There's, in essence, there's a cost savings by using this product from how you put it through the machines? Is that the cost savings you're, you're having?
I didn't think of that, but that's correct, yes.
Okay, but the, the product itself does similar, but it's the application gives you the more leniency to cost effect.
To keep the, keep the equipment running. That's correct.
We keep mentioning the project, product. All this is, is rubberized tar, or what is it?
Yes, that's what it is.
Okay.
So Darren, time is money, and that's, that's the saving factor in this.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Public comment, board, I don't see anything else from the board. Public comment? I don't see any. Bring it back to the board. Ready for motions in order, supervisor.
I move to determine that PO number 8129 is for the purchase of a product which may only be contracted from a sole source and therefore not suitable for public bidding pursuant to NRS 332.115. And to approve PO number 8129, a request to purchase crack sealant from Maxwell Products, Inc., for a not to exceed cost of $90,000 to be funded from Public Works Street Fund Account, Property Services and Street Repair, 256-3038-431-04-80, as provided in fiscal year 2014, 2015.
Motion by Supervisor Rayvoud, seconded by Supervisor McCann on the motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, carried unanimous. Okay, let's take up 13B. This is Interstate Cargo Trailer, the trade with Douglas County.
Right, this is, staff is asking you to determine that contract number 1415068 is a request to declare the 2006 Interstate Cargo Trailer surplus, which is owned by, which is purchased by the Health and Human Services Department and authorize its trade to Douglas County Emergency Management in return for an interstate loadrunner. This is considered a sale of surplus property to another government entity and therefore not suitable for public bidding. Staff has asked, requested the surplus trailer to be traded to Douglas County. The current Douglas County trailer does not meet their needs for the POD purposes, and they're requesting the trade for the services.
Okay.
Nikki Aker's here with?
Good, thank you. Ms. Aker, why is the existing cargo trailer surplusage, or should be surplusage?
Nikki Aker, Director of Carson City and Health and Human Services. So the trailer that Douglas County has now was purchased with Public Health Preparedness Grant Funds, and it was for the sole purpose of the point of distribution, dispensing or pod efforts. The trailer that was purchased, it has the wheel well cutouts on the inside instead of the outside, like the trailer that we have that we're willing to trade. And where that comes in importance is in storage. They're trying to put shelving on the inside in order to organize their supplies. And with those wheel well cutouts being on the inside of the trailer, it cuts out the storage. And the trailer that we are going to trade with them has the wheel well cutouts on the outside, which expands their area to store. Now, the trailer that we will get back from Douglas County will also be used for our bigger equipment, like tables, chairs for these pod events. And the trailer that will be going to Douglas County will be used for pod efforts. And Dave Ferguson is also here from Douglas County, and if you guys have any questions, direct it specifically at him.
Okay, I think we got a couple of questions. Supervisor Bonkowski, then Supervisor McCann.
Nikki, we actually have two of the interstate cargo trailers. Is that correct? We use one for our pod exercises, and we have an additional one, and that's the one that we would trade to Douglas County?
Right, there's, so the interstate, and I may get these mixed up, but the, there's two trailers. And we're basically, they're, they're very similar in size in that, and it's just the wheel well. And like I said, Douglas County will be using it for storage, and then we will get the other and use it for storage also. Did that answer your question?
No.
Sorry.
The loadrunner trailer, which is the trailer that Douglas County currently has, has the interior wheel wells.
Correct.
Carson City actually owns two of the interstate trailers. We have one that we currently use for our pod exercises, correct?
Mm-hmm.
And we have a second one, which is the one that would go to Douglas County so that we have compatibility with the two counties for the pod exercises.
Correct.
So we can interchange those trailers or set them up exactly the same for both counties?
Correct.
Okay, that answers my question.
Sorry.
Then, then also, we purchased the loadrunner trailer with grant funds. There are no issues for us, no repercussions for surplusing that trailer, taking it back and providing a new trailer to Douglas County in exchange?
No, because?
We wouldn't have to pay back the grant fund.
No, because the trailer we're exchanging, it will be used for the same, for the pod efforts.
Thank you.
Is there any current anticipated cost for the trailer we get from Douglas County? Are we going to put money into this deal?
No.
Okay.
Anything from Douglas County? How you doing this morning?
Really good. Dave Ferguson, Deputy Fire Chief, Freeze Fork, Deputy Emergency Manager for Douglas County.
It's Dave, correct?
Yes, sir.
Welcome to Carson City and welcome to the board.
Thank you. We appreciate the relationship that we have with Carson City Health and Human Services, especially the Public Health Preparedness side. They're right in our back pocket, and they've gotten us all the supplies we needed. Just when we ordered those two pod trailers to start with, they, when they were originally purchased, we thought they were identical, and they weren't identical. And so now we're just trying to make them identical again. So we really appreciate the consideration that you give this item.
Very good. Thank you. Anybody else from board? I don't see any lights. Public comment, anybody? Okay, board, we'll bring it back to the board.
I'll make it. I move to determine that contract number 1415-068 is a request to declare a 2006 Interstate Cargo Trailer surplus and authorize its trade to Douglas County Emergency Management in return for a 2009 Interstate Loadrunner. This is considered a sale of surplus property to another governmental entity and therefore not suitable for public bidding pursuant to NRS 334.030.
Motion by Supervisor Rayvoud, seconded by Supervisor McCann and Supervisor Bonkowski. A couple of seconds. On the motion, all in favor, signify by saying, on the motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, carried.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dave. Say hello to Douglas County for us.
Absolutely.
All right. It's a good thing you got rid of that interim city manager down there, too.
[laughter]
All right. All right, let's take up item 14 now. This is uncollectibles out of the landfill division. Mr. Providenti?
Thank you, Mayor. For the record, Nick Providenti, Finance Director. You looked really good on national television this morning, too, by the way, Mayor.
Well, I hope so.
I think you did the city proud. This item, we're basically asking you to remove uncollectible accounts receivable from the records of the landfill division of the general fund in the amount of $3,076.07 out of an est, out of estimated billings of $3,365,000. So basically, it's less than 1/10 of 1% of total billings that we're asking you to write off. A very small amount. It's a little bit easier for us to, you know, if you compare these write-offs versus the ambulance fund write-offs, we have a little more hook, we have a little more hammer on these guys, because we can basically say, you can't dump here anymore, and we cut them off. But I believe most of the businesses that we're asking you to write off have, were not a business, so.
John?
From my list, this is $2,652 for DK Stucco, drywall and stucco, makes up the bulk of this. What happens to the $2,600 bill? Does it go to collection?
It does. We'll, we'll send it to Hard Collect.
Okay, other comments, questions? Board, public comment or questions? Seeing none, we're ready for a motion? Motion's in order, Supervisor Bonkowski.
I move to approve the application to remove uncollectible accounts receivable from the records of the landfill division of the general fund in the amount of $3,076.07 out of an estimated billing through June 30th, 2014. out of an estimated billing through June 30th, 2014 of approximately $3,000... Or $3,365,000.
Motion by Supervisor Bunkowski. Couple of seconds on it, on the motion discussion. Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, carried unanimous. Thanks. Nick, take us up through 14B. This is the monthly report on receipts and disbursements, receipts and expenditures.
That's correct, Mayor. It's just the basic report that you see at every meeting.
Board comments? Public comments? Motion's in order. Motion Supervisor Rayboud.
I move to accept the report on the condition of each fund in the Treasury and the statements of receipts and expenditures through August 26, 2014 per NRS 251.030 and NRS 354.290.
Motion by Supervisor Rayboud, second by Supervisor Bunkowski on the motion discussion. Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, carried unanimous. Okay, thanks. Nick, let's take up the next one, the refunding.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, for the record, Nick Providenti, Finance Director, just the next three board items are going to be dealing with refunding bonds for the various issues, and the only reason why we're doing these refunding bonds is to reflect interest rate savings. So we're not extending the time out of the loans or anything like that. We're not doing it for cash flow purposes. It's just simply for interest rate savings. The first one is the, we're asking you to approve of the ordinance designated by the short title of the 2014 C Water Bond Ordinance. So what we're asking you to do, this will authorize the issuance of Carson City Nevada General Obligation Limited Tax Water Refunding Bonds, a Series 2014-C, for the purpose of refunding certain of the previously issued GO bonds. And I believe the bonds that we're asking you, that we're wanting to refund include the General Obligation Limited Tax Water Improvement and Refunding Bonds Series 2003 and Carson City General Obligation Limited Tax Water Bonds Series 2005A. We anticipate currently, we're estimating the total savings, the interest rate savings to be $356,968, and then the present value of that number, basically today's dollars, would be $314,335. And this is the first reading.
Right. Nick, are we refunding the Series 2003 and the Series 2005A bonds in their entirety or is it a partial refunding?
I am not completely sure, but I can tell you on second reading.
That's fine.
I believe, I believe, I believe that it is their entirety now because typically you have to wait 10 years before you can refund a bond. And the 2005s, you can, what we can do while it's 2014, it hasn't technically been 10 years, we can put a little of the money in escrow for the next payment and then, you know, basically make that payment as normal, and then we'd refund the rest of the series. But I'll double check on those and I'll let you know on the next.
Further board comments? Public comment?
Bill number is 112.
Good morning.
Good morning, Lori Bagwell. On the water refunding, is that going to allow for a future slight water decrease or anything for the public? This would help that situation in the account. So $356,000 is pretty good.
I suspect I know what the answer is, but we'll listen, hear from Nick.
Is that going to help us?
Well, I anticipate it's going to help us, but I'm not necessarily sure. I mean, you're talking about $30,000 a year, basically, for the next 10 years. So, I mean, it's a $12 million budget, so, I mean, it's going to help some, but I don't suspect it will affect the rates any. That's my... We'll definitely plug these numbers in when we do the budget next year and, you know, determine how that will shake out.
And I think everybody agrees, it's a smart thing to do to refund and refinance bonds for lower interest rates. I mean, there's essentially no downside to that as long as you're getting the right interest rate out of it.
Right.
Okay, all right. Anybody else? I don't see any board. Supervisor McCann, go.
I move to introduce on first reading Bill number 112, an ordinance of the Board of Supervisors of Carson City, Nevada, designated by the short title 2014 Capital C Water Bond Ordinance, providing for the issuance of its general obligation limited tax water refunding bonds additionally secured by pledged revenues, Series 2014 Capital C, providing the form, terms, and conditions of the bonds, providing for the levy and collection of annual general ad valorem taxes for the payment of such bonds, additionally securing their payment by a pledge of revenues derived from the water system of Carson City and providing other matters relating thereto.
Motion by Supervisor McCann, second by Supervisor Rayboud on the motion discussion. Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, carried unanimous. Thanks. Let's take up the 2014D sewer refunding bond ordinance.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, for the record, Nick Providenti, this is the sewer side of the refunding bond ordinance, and we're anticipating refunding the sewer improvement and refunding bonds, Series 2003, and Carson City, Nevada, General Obligation Limited Drainage Bonds, Series 2005B. So the anticipated total savings from this refunding will be $228,489.08 with a present value of $196,020.88.
Board comments? Questions? Public comments? Questions? Motion's in order.
I move to introduce on first reading Bill number 113, an ordinance of the Board of Supervisors of Carson City, Nevada, designated by the short title 2014D Sewer Refunding Bond Ordinance, providing for the issuance of its general obligation limited tax sewer refunding bonds additionally secured by pledged revenues, Series 2014D, providing the form, terms, and conditions of the bonds, providing for the levy and collection of annual general ad valorem taxes for the payment of such bonds, additionally securing their payment by a pledge of revenues derived from the sanitary sewer system and drainage system of the city and providing other matters related thereto.
Motion by Supervisor Bunkowski, second by Supervisor Rayboud on the motion discussion. Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, carried unanimous. Thank you. All right, take up the last one of these. This is the VNT Historical Refunding Bond.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, for the record, Nick Providenti, Finance Director, we will be refunding the 2005 VNT Historical Bonds that were additionally secured by the 1A cent sales tax revenues. The anticipated total savings of this refunding is $667,707 with a present value of $576,873.
Board comments?
Nick, for the record, when will this debt be retired?
Looks like June or December, I beg your pardon, December 1st, 2025.
Thank you.
Unless the tax, I mean, all we're doing with that 1A cent sales tax is paying off these bonds. So if that, if that tax continues to grow, we could pay off the bond sooner. And this is going to be saving about $55,000 a year in interest on those bonds, so.
Further comments? Public comments? Motion's in order.
I'll make it. I move to introduce on first reading Bill number 114, an ordinance of the Board of Supervisors of Carson City, Nevada, designated by the short title 2014 Capital E VNT Historical Refunding Bond Ordinance, providing for the issuance of its Carson City, Nevada, General Obligation Limited Tax VNT Historical Refunding Bonds additionally secured by pledged revenues, Series 2014 Capital E, providing the form, terms, and conditions of the bonds, providing for the levy and collection of annual general ad valorem taxes for the payment of such bonds, additionally securing their payment by a pledge of revenues derived from the certain sales tax imposed by the city and providing other matters related thereto.
Motion by Supervisor Rayboud, second by Supervisor Bunkowski on the motion discussion. Hearing none. All in favor, signify. Discussion?
Yeah. I think I know the answer, but on the water bonds, Nick, the rate of interest is 2.45. On these bonds, it's 2.5. Why the difference in interest rates?
I think it's just basically what they figure they can get in the market, and it was, it's probably the life, the life of the issuance. Let me look here real quick. The water bonds might be, we're talking about 10 years, and the sewer bonds, we're talking about... That's about 10 years, too. I'd have to, I'll have to, I'll have that question answered as well.
Thank you.
I'll ask our financial advisors.
Okay, on the motion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, carried unanimous. Thank you very much. Let's now go to item 15, Board of Supervisors, non-action items, future agenda items. Don't see any status review of projects. Anything, Mr. City Manager?
Not at this time.
Board comments? Anything from board?
Were comments?
Comments in order.
I'll defer to Mr. Bunkowski about the RTC meeting on the 10th.
Yes, at the next RTC meeting on the 10th, we are going to have a discussion on the collection and distribution of the gas tax, the 5-cent gas tax that was implemented as part of an agreement with NDOT to help fund portions of the Carson City Freeway. We've had some requests from the public to go through that so that there's an understanding of how it was collected, how much has been collected, and where that money's been spent. So anybody that is interested in that, please come to the next RTC meeting. It will be right after the Campbell meeting, which starts at 4:30 on next Wednesday. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? I don't see anything. Are we ready for concluding public comment? Any concluding public comment? I don't see anything. Are we ready to adjourn?
Yes.
We ready? Unless there's an objection, we are adjourned.